Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Illyria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecity.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
Good morning, can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the December 16th Meeting of the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners, our last meeting before the holidays. I have Proverbs 37 through 9. "God, I beg two favors from you; let me have them before I die. First, help me never to tell a lie; second, give me neither poverty nor riches; give me just enough to satisfy my needs, for if I grow rich, I may deny you and say, 'Who is the Lord?'" And if I am poor, I may steal and thus insult God's holy name." And I have the dog for the kennel this morning.
I know.
Come on, little fella. We've got the cutest little pug mix. Sweet, playful, fun, would make a great pet for the Christmas holidays. You can spend $30 on a gift for Christmas that'll last long enough for the kids to be bored with it within an hour, or you can spend $66 and come and pick up a dog from our dog kennel. If you don't like this one, we have 22 other dogs. And that $66 includes...I know, he's a spinner. You can name him Spinner.
(laughing).
You're funny. He heard you.
Oh, my gosh.
$66...okay, hey, come here, come here, settle down. Okay, sit, you sit. Okay, relax, it's okay. $66 includes the cost of adoption and spay and neuter, but he's already neutered, so we won't have to worry about that. And also, your tags for next year, your license for your dog for next year. So, come down to our kennel. You can also check us out on Facebook and see what we have down here.[163.22][163.22](laughing). Come pick Spinner up, and he's available Saturday?
Friday.
Friday, Friday. So, he's a lot of fun. Thank you. Come on, baby. Okay, Madam Clerk.
Under Resolutions Number One, Investments.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Here. Aye. Sorry.
All year, all year. No company has been breaking in this new Commissioner.
Messed it up.
Okay, Mr. Kallo.
Aye.
Appropriations.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kallo.
Aye.
Transfers.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kallo.
Aye.
Under the Commissioners, authorize various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within jurisdictional Lorraine County Commissioners.
Mr. Cortez.
Thank you, Madam Commissioner. I do have a number of personnel issues that I want to go over with the Board, some potential hires, appointments, ongoing labor negotiations, potential sale and purchase of real estate. All of those issues are allowed under Sunshine Act for executive session discussions that ask at the conclusion of a regular board meeting, go into executive session and talk about those items that I've outlined. Thank you.
Approving way of the reading of the minutes of November 24th.
So moved.
Second.
December 1st, 2nd, 9th. That's okay. Ms. Kowski.
Ten years and I still can't get it right.
Eleven.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kallo.
Aye.
Repair Resolution 13471, adopted May 15, 2013, Section 6.2, Vacation, and it's going to be for clarification of personal policy manual.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kallo.
Aye.
Authorize payment of $1,000 to Boyer &amp; Co., funerals for Lorraine for indigent veteran Donald George Schoonmaker, Illyria, in accordance with Ohio Revest Code 5901.25.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kallo.
Aye.
Authorize payment of $1,000 to wires, Bolinger Funeral Chapel, Illyria, for indigent veteran Albert M. Carrot, in Illyria, in accordance with the ORC 5901.25.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kallo.
Aye.
Authorize the supplement of a CERN sublease, an amendment and reinstatement of a CERN agreement of lease with Mercy Health and/or its affiliates in connection with the addition of CERN property. Some property was mistakenly left off of a transfer and legal description needs adjusted for 2.7569 acres, Shen Road, Key Court.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kallo.
Aye.
Reject all bids received for job and family services, drainage improvement and parking lot repairs and payment replacement. Will rebid at a later date, an award contract in Infinity Pavement Company Northfield in the amount of $119,094.50 for the Juvenile Detention Center parking lot repairs and payment replacement project to be paid from the capital improvements notes, building, repair, maintenance account. Issue notice to proceed on or before May 1, 2016, and give leave on or before June 24, and authorize administrator to notify the auditor to release retain as a completion of project.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kallo.
Aye.
Revoke the Enterprise Zone Tax Payment Agreement with exemptions of Barbados LLC, Trimline Division, Village of La Grange, and Certified for Repayment Taxes exempted.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kallo.
Aye.
Revoke the Enterprise Zone Tax Payment Agreement with exemptions from Instover Inc., Village of La Grange, and Certified for Repayment Taxes exempted.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kallo.
Aye.
Authorize county administrator to provide and execute all necessary documents effective December 17, 2015, through December 31, 2015, for the year-end closed activity, including but not limited to transfers, advances, repayments, reparations, requisitions, travel, bills, payroll-related transactions, and payments.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kallo.
Aye.
Revoke the Enterprise Zone Tax Payment Agreement with exemptions of Barbados LLC, Trimline Division, Village of La Grange, and Certified for Repayment Taxes exempted.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Do you have something, Mr. Cortez?
Well, I don't know. No? Okay.
Mr....Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kallo.
Aye.
Revoke the Enterprise Zone Tax Payment Agreement, exemptions from Instover Inc., Village of La Grange, and Certified for Repayment Taxes exempted.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Did you want to discuss why these are being exempted?
Well, we're prepared to. The...we've been working on this for several months, and since the review committees reported out. Jerry Good's here, and he has some talking points on that. I figured, at least, we know why we're doing it, but maybe we can explain what the problem with these abatements have been, because we're always promoting business here and wanting to expand and retain and attract additional businesses. This seems counterproductive to that, but there's reasons for this.
Right. Jerry?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Jerry Good, I'm Lorraine County.
Jerry, you're gonna have to lean into that mic a little.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Both of these came before the Tax Incentive Review Council back in March, and we've been, I guess, working with these two companies and the local community for some years. The Barbados Trimline Enterprise Zone was entered into on April 25, 2005, and the Inservco Stacy Enterprise Zone was entered into on June 28, 2007. As part of those agreements, Barbados agreed to create four jobs, and Inservco agreed to create 39 jobs. Now, neither of these companies ever created any jobs, and so, we knew that the recession had been hard on a lot of companies, and they were given an opportunity to meet those obligations, but they've never been able to do that. Now, both companies received substantial, I would say, benefits from those, to the extent of...let me see here. The net effect for Inservco was $22,057.21, and Barbados was $19,065.46. And so, they received tax benefits, but were unable to create the jobs.
You know, Commissioners, it's also...now, I may have turned this mic up too much. It also bears a certain amount of attention that we have communicated with the companies over a period of time to correct these deficiencies. And during the Great Recession, there was a very compassionate look at their inability to perform under the requirements, because everybody was suffering. But sooner or later, they have to perform some of the requirements, and there's been no corrective action whatsoever, which led me to recommend, several months back, that we tried to deal with them. We have sent them letters, we have done that, and we really have received no significant response from them. And so, I think at this point, the only thing we can do is withdraw the abatement and do the clawback, and see where it goes. I hope that this works for them, but taxpayers deserve return on the investment of tax abatements they receive, and we need to send a clear message that we're gonna do tax abatements, and that they're gonna have to perform under those, and they're gonna be withdrawn.
Now, there will be ability to negotiate on how they would pay that back. Some are not going after lump sum necessarily with a company, no different than people who have fallen behind in their taxes, these didn't meet the requirements of abatement, that there would be an ability to...
I'm sure that it's...they're not willingly gonna send us a check.
Right, that's what I'm guessing. So, I mean, there'll be further on prosecutors offices involved with this to some degree, I'm assuming?
Yes. And I think that we'll have conversation with them, but they have to come to the table. I mean, we're gonna send them the bill, we're gonna send them all the stuff, and hopefully, they'll wanna communicate with us and make arrangements for how to pay that back. I will tell you, they've never made any arrangements on how they were gonna meet their obligation under the abatement, and we did try several times.
What was the timeframe that they had to create those jobs?
Well, the Enterprise Zone agreements use a time period of three years. That three years goes back to the beginning of those, so for the one company, it was 2005, they should've created those jobs at the very least by 2009.
They're not actually losing their entire abatement, although you're losing it the past three years.
Right.
Like I said, the one goes back to 2005. I mean, the entire abatement's up, so they're still gonna have benefited. I don't know, they did some construction, too, to...
Yes, both companies did.
So, I mean, they're not losing their entire abatement, we're just going back three years.
Yeah, we're only looking at a three-year period out of that entire Enterprise Zone period.
I know the general public feels like the government doesn't do enough or needs to do more to create jobs, and the government is out there all the time offering incentives. But clawback provisions are very important. This is not, you know, government wanting to make a business pay or penalize a business because they couldn't step up to the plate. This is...it's purely business. There's an agreement that you're going to create X number of jobs, and if you do not create those jobs, then the taxpayers need to receive, you know, that money back. But it was, you know, very alarming to me when I saw the paperwork and saw that, you know, somebody would promise four jobs, they weren't able to make that goal, and then to promise 39 jobs, but zero for results. You know, it's very alarming. So, we have a responsibility to make sure that we closely monitor these, that there are clawback provisions. And as I said, it's nothing personal, it's just business. We had an agreement, you didn't reach the goals, for whatever the reasons there may have been, but the taxpayers need their money back.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jerry.
Thank you.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kallo.
Aye.
Approve the 2016 Special Revenue and Annual Appropriation.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kallo.
Aye.
Approve the 2016 Temporary General Fund Budget.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Yeah, let's do a little bit of discussion here.
Okay.
As everybody's aware, I've been well-reported. The budget for 2016, we've got approximately $6.6 million carryover. Estimated revenue from the Budget Commission is just shy of $51 million, so $50,966.72, which gives us the ability to appropriate $57,500,000. The budget request came in at about $59.9 million, just shy of $60 million, so we're looking at about a $2.4 million shortfall for next year. As we have in the past, as we've been working through the recession, we will be appropriating a first-quarter allocation of about $40.3 million to start our year, and we have till the end of March to do a final appropriation. Currently, the numbers coming in, that have been looked at, discussed with the Budget Director, vis-à-vis our county administrator, and I think we can all live with this based on the packs we are giving, we're looking at 2015 free same-budget they received last year for all of our departments, other than some contractual increases. So, again, we're looking at a very difficult year for next year. Again, we've been through this, Commissioner. Commissioner Lundey, appreciate you being here this year. Again, you know, your insight input.
I thought you told me you had all kinds of money when I ran for this.
No, I told you we didn't.[976.12][976.12](laughing). I started, "You nuts, you want this job?"
Same as Cortez told you when you ran, right?
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah. I don't mean to make...
Well, actually, what I told Ted when he ran was that the picture five years down the road wasn't good. We...there was actually some funds, but they were declining steadily.
Yeah, he's like Johnny Carson when he was playing in the sea or whatever that was. What was he called? Johnny Carson, the guy who saw the future?
Karnak?
Yeah, Karnak, Jim Cortez. But, you know, sorry to the departments, our employees, we've had some increases in healthcare. Normal increases, just operations. We always have capital issues, as we were sitting yesterday with some of our staff people talking about the condition that our garage is in.
Piece fell on my car and...
Well, Commissioner, so, you know, let's also, you know, understand while we're talking budget, that we're deferring payment on capital improvements that we're making. We're at about $3 million of capital improvements that we eventually will have to go to bonding on, that we'll have to debt service, and that debt service will probably be in the range of...
$200,000?
$200,000, $215,000 to $250,000, depending on the expense of borrowing at the time. And we've also...we're gonna need about $3 million to satisfy the needs at the courthouse. That's another $250,000, thereabouts. So, that's a half a million dollars of debt service that's going to be needed in the next year or two, to meet those requirements. And that doesn't alleviate all of the burdens that we have, that we need to look at, we go out to capital.
You'll look forward, Jim. Let's talk about the case management system that's been in discussion in the courts for years, and the numbers anywhere from $3.5 million to $7 million in possible additional software and...
I know the courts are trying to figure out how much assistance they can give on that from the revenue funds, and I don't know how much they'll come up with and still need on that. But, you know, you can see that the demands are gonna be significant over the next couple of years, and I think that in the first quarter, we're doing a few things that'll be a little risky, but we're looking at our reserves on our workers' comp insurance, our reserves on our cost or insurance, reserves on our healthcare insurance. It's, you know, we may be leaning them down a little bit further. We made all those maneuvers into higher-risk reinsurance a few years back to save some money on that. It's time to relook at it, bringing an actuary in on the workers' comp issue. I already have an actuarial report on the healthcare accounts, so I think that we're gonna be okay at the 2015 level, but we need the money from...it's out there in common knowledge now. We need the money for the nursing home beds, there's a million dollars in the revenue projection of that. I still think the revenue projections are low, so I think with an increase in the revenue projections, along with getting the nursing home beds sold, and then thinning the reserves on some of our risk insurances, we'll probably be able to cover some ground on this in the first quarter. But we still have a lot of looming things in the future that we gotta take care of. And right now, I don't even know that we fully have allocated for all the cars that are needed for the Sheriff's Department. There's the body armor issue, the Board of Elections, we have mandatory expenditures there that are increased, we have mandatory expenditures at the Sheriff's Department for raises that are contractually obligated. He hasn't asked for anything for the non-bargaining staff, but, well, he asked, but we just did the contractual part, and the list is going on and on. And of course, the biggest thing is, the jail is becoming obsolete, the parking deck's obsolete. You just look around, so...
Well, yeah, I didn't mean to make light of the situation earlier. I guess sometimes you hope that humor will ease the pain. But, you know, I know when I was talking to Lisa the other day, she said, "Yes, one of the worst ones I've seen as well, Matt, in the long time that she's been here." And, you know, first, I just want to thank everybody who, you know, worked with us in putting this together, because I know it's a lot of work, and I'm just amazed by, you know, all the work that Lisa and her team, and you and your team, and, you know, my colleagues all put in to make sure that we can produce something that's responsible to provide the services that we're responsible for providing to our residents. You know, the harsh reality is that Columbus has abandoned you. Help is not coming from Columbus, the Calvary's not coming. We have to survive on our own. And it's, you know, it's difficult when we look at situations where we have to, you know, borrow money so we can have enough cars for the Sheriff's Department to provide the safety for the residents out there. It's difficult when Denny Will and his office, you know, loses good talent, because it's hard to have competitive wages for folks in the prosecutor's office. And, you know, folks, that office works extremely hard for you and provides a lot of services to this county, and it's also a big reason why our land bank has been so successful, too, through the work of Chris and others. But it requires, you know, funding to get the job done. Everybody says, "Run government like a business." Well, we can't just go out there and change the price tags, or change the price at the pump. It's just not that easy to do. You know, I know I ran on a campaign promise of saying that we need to put the question, you know, before the voters, and every day I look at these numbers, and it's pretty obvious that we are going to need new revenue, we're gonna need new revenue pretty soon. But there are some mandatory things we have to take care of. For instance, Board of Elections, you know, we have a big presidential year coming up. We're gonna end up having to spend an extra $100,000 there just to facilitate, make sure the election goes well. We've got a bowl-approved vest that the Sheriff's Department needs. The warranties are going to be running out on those. We want to make sure that the men and women who protect the residents of this county are safe, so, you know, we step up and provide that. The departments, I think, have done a great job of being team players and trying to hold par on everything. You know, we did receive the court order about some additional funding for the courts there, and that's, you know, their position, those funds are needed to provide an adequate justice system for the county, and a quality justice system. But these things don't go away, for your own purposes at home. You know, utilities increase, you know, that health insurance costs increase, and our employees have really worked with us over the years, and then we still have to ask them, "You've gotta work with us even more again." And they're thinking, "Wait a minute, I've been, you know, practically getting nothing additional on my pay, and you keep asking me to work with you and work with you and work with you. When does it stop?" You know, we're asking the same question, "When does it stop?" But we are definitely getting to the point where, you know, new revenue considerations are going to have to be...going to have to be looked at at some point soon. But I just want to thank everybody for working with us on a tough budget, and yes, we are asking everybody to work together for another year. Let's get through another year. Unfortunately, government has become an expert at deferred maintenance. We keep putting things off and putting things off, but eventually, you gotta get things taken care of. We're hoping we can revive and bring back to life, you know, a quality courthouse, so the Grand Old Lady will get a makeover and be, you know, our proud cornerstone here in the county. But this requires everybody pitching in, and I think everybody did a good job of doing that, and we're hoping things will get better. But as I said, we're on our own, we're at the outpost. Columbus is not coming to help. Thank you to his governor, to the governor and his administration, and for some reason, they're anti-local government beliefs. But it always impacts you at home, and it's easy for folks in Columbus to beat their chest and say, "Well, look, we haven't raised taxes," so on and so forth, which they have, sales tax and other things that they've done to you. But they just don't understand how that all gets kicked down to the local level, and how it has a very negative impact locally. So, we'll get through another year, and I appreciate everybody working with us on it, and we couldn't have done it without you. Thank you.
And I would just like to stress, with the shortfall being $2.3 million, if that sale of the beds through Golden Acres doesn't happen, that'll be more like a $3.5 million shortfall. Am I correct? Because the Budget Commission had that revenue...
Well, there's a million...
Right.
...of the potential sale, so that million dollars will not be available to us.
On top of that, the property of Golden Acres didn't sell either.
It didn't. We had some blowback from neighboring communities that caused ODOT to be overly restrictive on an access off of 58, and that was $1.3 million that we were supposed to have that hasn't materialized, but I'm still hopeful the property will be sold. But we can't spend money that we don't have and the anticipation that it'll be sold. It could be six months, it could be years.
I also just wanted, for clarification, I know there's a false perception out there. You've seen that we're in talks with the Visitors Bureau on whether or not to renew that contract, but I guess I just want to make people very much aware in that sometimes the perception is, "Oh, they wanna use that money for the general fund." Well, we can't use that money for the general fund, we wouldn't use that money for the general fund. You know, there would just be a continuation of providing the same services, maybe in a different form, if that were to happen. But no, we're not looking to use Visitors Bureau money to help with general fund issues.
We're not allowed to anyways.
Not allowed to.
It's designated to what that money could be spent for, so it's...even if we wanted to, we couldn't, so...
Right.
Is that it? Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kallo.
Aye.
Under 911, enter into agreement with Paladin Valley View, Ohio, in the amount of $23,571.86 for the network CCTV system, and $38,460.66 for the countywide IP video solution for dispatch.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kallo.
Aye.
Under Community Development Award Contract, Donald B. Eager and Associates LLC, in the amount of $6,000 for preparation and completion, and Lorraine County Analysis of Impediments to Fair Housing Choice.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kallo.
Aye.
Under Job and Family, authorize various personnel in 2016 to utilize various credit cards not to exceed $4,000. Set usages for work-related expenses, food, transportation, gas and oil, motor vehicle repair, maintenance, conference, telephone, and lodging.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kallo.
Aye.
Authorize purchase service agreement with Childcare Resource Center, Lorraine, to provide certification training for type B child daycare providers for fiscal year 16, in the amount not to exceed $17,681.70, effective January 1, 2016 through December 31, 2016. Authorize director to execute on behalf of the Board, amend for changes in program and content, and increase value with Prosecutor's approval as to form.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kallo.
Aye.
Authorize purchase service agreement with Murray Ridge Production Center, Illyria, for cleaning services for fiscal year 16, in the amount not to exceed...this is actually $6,500. I add an extra six.
Oh, wow. Okay. Makes a big difference.
It does make a big difference. Effective February 1, 2016 through January 31, 2017, authorize director to execute on behalf of the Board, amend for changes in program and content, and increase value Prosecutor's approval as to form.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kallo.
Aye.
Authorize purchase service agreement with El Centro to Services Socials, Inc., Lorraine, to provide Spanish consultant services for fiscal year 16, in the amount of $800, effective January 1 through December 31, 2016, and authorize director to execute on behalf of the Board for amend for changes in program and content and increase value Prosecutor's approval as to form.
So moved.
What's the increased value?
Second.
That...
It's just our standard language that's always put in there, just in case it goes up or down.
Well, I don't want it to go down, but I think if it goes up, we should know about that. I don't remember that being...maybe it's been...maybe just caught my...
It's been in every single resolution for years.
The thing happens, the same thing with Murray Ridge doing the cleaning, Jim, it's just, I think it's the standard language.
Was it 3% though? What's the increased value? Is there a cap on that?
Do you have anything?
Do we have a cap on the increased value?
I just saw it on these two.
Yeah, it's been in everyone we've always done.
It's on all of them that we do, in case there's an increase or something happens. I guess they use them twice. Here we go.
Certification.
It's standard language in every agreement that we have.
Yeah, I think it's gonna come out on the next year.
Okay.
I don't know why, it never caught my attention when I passed that stuff through, so...
It's your fault.
It is my fault.[1795.43][1795.43](laughing). I'll accept responsibility for that. But... But what good is approving a contract if it can...
Increase in value.
Increase in value.
Good question. Do we want to put a cap on it?
We'll start a new policy and procedure next year.
We just won't put them in for next year, the increased value. Just leave it up. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kahlo?
Aye.
Under Common Police, authorize Lorraine County Common Police General Division Judges and Staff to utilize county's law enforcement issued based credit card not to exceed 7,500 per Court Administrator's Office until such time is revoked by Financial Institute and are modified by authority granting approval. Said authorized utilization of card is for official county business pursuant to ORC 30127.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kahlo?
Aye.
Under the Engineer, approve an enter into construction engineering agreement with Greenman Patterson, Inc., in the amount not to exceed $1,085,198 to provide coordination, construction, administration, inspection services for LOR Lirnagle Road Widening Project North Ridgeville. ODOT has reviewed and will be funded by Federal Highway Administration through NOACA, ODOT and City of Ridgeville. Authorized engineer to execute on behalf of the board, prosecutor's approvals to form.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kahlo?
Aye.
Enter into leasing agreement with Canon Financial Service in the amount of $40,020 for the replacement colorway 550 plotter and scanner for the CAD department to be paid from the MVGD equipment lease account.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kahlo?
Aye.
Under the Sheriff, enter into renewal agreement with Dr. Tran for dental services in the amount of $106 per hour effective January 1 through December 31, 2016.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kahlo?
Aye.
Mr. Cortez?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. It's our last meeting of the year. I hope everybody has a happy holiday season going into the new year. We won't be back to do much of anything until the beginning of January, but staff will still be here working. We have a lot of work to do in the first quarter with the budget so that we can be prepared to pass what we have to do, is the permanent budget by the end of March, in case anybody was wondering out there. So that work will be ongoing as soon as we close out the year. We'll have a better understanding of the carryover. We'll be able to, in January, hopefully, work with the Budget Commission on moving those revenue anticipation numbers a bit. I think they're still weak. So while the board's not meeting, a lot of work is still going on. I want the public to understand that. We just don't close now until the middle of January. So happy holidays, everybody, and that's all I have for today.
Didn't you have a contract we had to approve?
That's the one that's going.
Yeah, I guess we should do that.
Yes.
That's the Coldwater one I mentioned to you guys in the hallway.
Cleaning the invasive species.
I also have an NSP three contract here. I'll pass these down. There's three copies here. We might as well do the CT consultant. We're going to come from the floor on that.
Maybe sometime after the first of the year, we could have Don come in and talk to, tell us about the invasive species and how we're eradicating those and where we're doing it, because I'm seeing banners popping up all over the place, so...
You know, it's been a good program. We've been able to put people to work, use a lot of federal dollars, hard to employ, at-risk folks. We've had some varying success with that. We have money again for the program next year. I was, I think we could have them come in and do that, but also probably want to report out on arranging a joint meeting in the Stormwater District and the Stormwater Advisory Committee for the end of January or the beginning of February to do a roundtable as we did last year. We had great results. It was a good time to network with the folks in the unincorporated area. So we can, getting ready for that. We'll do it here first, and then we'll do it at that meeting. Sounds like a great idea.
Madam Clerk?
I don't know why this resolution says amending a contract, because it's an actual new contract, according to everything in here. So approve a, I'm just going to say approve a contract with Coldwater Consulting LLC for consultant services, including implementation, but not limited to implementation of the Great Lakes Restoration Initiative grant in the amount of 600,000. And then not to exceed 100, the grant, wait, award, the county received a contract from the USPA for restoration of the parts of Willow Creek, and so this contract is not to exceed 120,000.
Right.
Not to exceed 120, exactly, correct, thank you.
But, yeah.
Okay. So moved?
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kahlo?
Aye.
And that's the Willow Creek contract, right?
Okay. Now, this one is, again, there's amending an agreement, which I'm not sure why they're amending it, but a contract, agreement with CT Consultants to increase not to exceed an amount for NSP in order to complete additional projects in the amount of 18,000?
Whatever the resolution says there, they got...
Seeing this prior to, I'm like...
Well, and I get, everybody's scurrying late at the end of the year, things are coming down pretty fast.
I think 18,000 for an additional work to be done.
If that's not correct, we could amend it at our next meeting. So moved?
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kahlo?
Aye.
Is that the only two?
I don't want to frustrate you anymore, yeah.
You're not frustrating me, I'm just kind of...
I was going to say, there is a reason...
Trying to read it and amending it, so...
There's a reason in Columbus...
They should say amending contracts.
Why we used to be there till 2:00 in the morning, because we had all the loose ends we had to tie up before the end of the year, so, right.
Any other comments, Mr. Cortez?
No.
No.
Not for now, for now. Ms. Renus?
I just may have a couple of updates. This is our last meeting regarding some pending litigation issues.
Commissioner's report. This past Friday, I attended my N-RAC meeting. We had two projects that we raided, and there was enough funding for both of those projects, so they'll both be going through. One of them was in Lorraine County through the metro parks over in Vermillion. On my way back, I stopped at the dog kennel. I hadn't been there for a while, and I just want to say the staff was so professional, friendly and caring. They were going above and beyond. The facility was clean, the dogs were well cared for, and I just want to thank the community for all the donations that they've been bringing to the kennel. They have a ton of blankets, they have dry dog food, wet dog food for older dogs, toys. Really nice what they're doing for our dogs over there. They do have a Facebook page, like I said earlier, and on, I think it was on Sundays, they have pup dates, and it's updates from the dogs who have been adopted from the kennel, and they have pictures with their new forever homes. So it's really nice. Also, the new outdoor runs, I took a look at those. Used to have to take the dogs out and then into the gated, now you go right into the run.
And we have more of them, because we divided off some of the bigger compounds so that we can, we can put more dogs off the leash and let them run for a little bit. In fact, that was your idea. Took a little longer to get it done, but it is finally done, and we, I did have a conversation with Tim over some signage.
Yes, I was going to bring that up.
The, what we've decided, Commissioner, is that we're actually going to go with banner signage, so we can change up the banner periodically. And we have that really great front on that building there, and it's lighted there, and I think Tim had a really great idea. Rather than having one fixed sign, when we have events and things, we can have, the banners are not that expensive to have made, and we can reuse them at various times for events and so forth. So we'll be working on that. You had spoken to me about that.
Right, that was the only improvement I was looking to do over there.
What I would say about the dog kennel, because it's been an on-again, off-again thing for, with me for 20 years. The right leadership and the right employees make a huge difference, and we got a good team.
We do.
We've struggled off and on. We've had some good people, but we haven't had a really good team for a very long period of time, and I couldn't be happier with the kennel. I stop out there periodically when I'm on the road, and I drop in unannounced, and the last couple of years, I've been just hugely impressed with how things are going out there at the kennel.
The new trucks have a new gate on the back that you could actually fit four dogs in the back of the trucks now. They have a divider and then another double divider, so really nice. Monday, we all presented a check to the Lorraine Port Authority for $20,000 for their new pavilion. That came from our solid waste money, was recycled material, and they were very happy to get that. And then yesterday, I attended the grand opening of the new Homewood, yeah, Homewood Inn. It's a Hilton Hotel over in Sheffield Village. It's gorgeous inside and out. You should take a look at that. And then we also had our Christmas party yesterday, so I wanted to thank all of our staff who helped put that together. We had great food and a good time, and I don't see Whitney here, but she did some games, and they were a lot of fun, and, man, if, we only videoed Mr. Cortez catching the cookie, man, it was priceless, so...
The cookie wasn't that good, though.
No, well, you were, you were good at catching the cookies, so that's all that matters. And I just wanted to wish everybody a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year and a safe holiday, and we'll see you next year.
I didn't see him take the cookie back out. He did eat the cookie.
He did eat it. Oh, yeah, he ate it.
Well, I look like I pass up a cookie.
No.
We didn't have to be so quick.
End of my report.
Thank you, Commissioner. Yeah, busy week. In the WAC, we had our last governing board meeting of the year, finishing up projects, moving forward, and moving forward towards next year. I will be turning over to Gavel next month to Dan Troy, Lake County Commissioner, be serving as past president.
Those will be lively meetings.
Yeah, be lively meetings with Dan Troy. We'll never get out of there. I'm real good at running very good direct meetings, even the staff say, "You know what? We're out of here till, especially at 1:12, 12:40, we're out of here. 12:20, we're out of here." But it's been a very good year on the WAC. I think we've been very successful. We brought a lot of dollars to our community, whether it's Alert and Angle, Route 57, some of the funding, Griswold Road, dollars allocated for the widening of Cooper Foster Park Road between Broadway and Oban Avenue, and a multitude of other projects. So I think we've had one of our better years. It's been a pleasure serving there. Also, Janet Garrett had her fundraiser on Sunday attended. She's running for Congress this year. Myself and Commissioner Lundey attended. Mayor Hunter of Sheffield Village just swearing in. He had a full house, as always. John does a great job, as you can say, you're in Sheffield Village for the grand opening.
Excuse me, you were in the center?
The heart.
The heart.
The heart of Lorraine County.
We'll get a call, we don't say that.
And actually, Mayor Hunter's favorite commissioner, he pointed that out, correct, Commissioner Lundey?
You want me to second that?
It's been a very good year. I'd like to thank, as always, Commissioner Kowski. A pleasure working with you for 11 years. But I'd like to thank you, Mr. Lundey. It's been a pleasure having you here. I think we've accomplished a lot. We've been able to work through some issues. And to all our departments, I think we've accomplished a lot. Our Community Development Department, whether it was doing the invasive species or working on economic development, thanks for coming to the team, Jerry. Our solid waste has been a very successful year. We've got our new plan passed. We're going to miss Brian Parsons as the chair of that. Hope we find someone just as enthused about recycling, looking forward to the organics facility. We hope we can start next year working with the state and Barnes Nursery. Our Lorraine County Port Authority, the prosecutor's office, the clerk of courts and the judiciary. Great year for our county land bank. Chris Pionowski here is our lead legal from the prosecutor's office. We've accomplished a lot with the demos and cleaning up our neighborhoods, especially in urban areas. The advancements at 911, looking to do even more next year. We've really brought that around. As Commissioner Kowski always pointed out, the kennel's doing a great job. Actually, I spoke to someone in Columbus, I was at Commissioners Association last week. I actually stopped by our kennel because I heard such good things, and I can't remember which staff person it was. It was either Huron or Ashland County, who was through Lorraine County, stopped at our kennel and said, "What a nice job we seem to be doing here, hearing good things about us." Again, the WAC has been a great year. Mr. Cortez, you worked with the Stormwater District and the Stormwater Advisory Committee and what we're getting done across the county, our relationships rebuilt and working with people. And then moving forward off that, actually helping Columbia Township with their master planning. I spoke with Dick Heidecker the other day, and he said it's going very well, and they like how the project is working out, and the county's helped, the consultant helped them find. So things have been a very good year. Looking forward to 2016. As always, it's tough budgets here, but I guess that's what we deal with, right? Our job is to make sure the county operates in a balanced budget, and we do that to the best of our ability. And Merry Christmas to all. It's been a great year, and we will see you next year. Thank you.
At first, I wanted to, I guess, clear up, you've seen plenty of stories recently about the Visitors Bureau, and there's extensive stories, Sunday's paper and editorial and today's paper, and as I said earlier in the meeting, I just want to make clear to everybody that, you know, sometimes the perception is that, well, the commissioners need that money to fill some budget holes, and that money has to be used for tourism. It will be used for tourism. We've asked the Visitors Bureau to make a presentation to us on what they would like to do going forward. In fact, actually, we're operating without a contract right now. And this is a contract that was a five-year contract, up for renewal. But basically, we're operating without a contract right now. And, you know, the county is changing, and it's important that we look forward as to what we want to do. I have tremendous respect for those who are on the board. They're very passionate with what they do. But I think every once in a while, it's good to stop and take a look and see what you want to look like going forward. We had serious concerns about transparency, very serious concerns about transparency. And as I said, the county is changing. We want to make sure that we're engaging all the parties in the county, whether they're Illyria Lorain, Avon, Avon Lake, North Ridgeville, so that everybody's involved. But I just want to make clear that with this presentation also, that I would be supportive of the idea, if my colleagues would be supportive of, you know, if the Visitors Bureau would like to come in in January and make a presentation, that would be great. At that time, they could give us an idea on what they'd like to do in the future. This isn't any decision we're racing to make by the end of the year, by January 1. Probably a decision will be made early in 2016. But I also want everybody to know, we're not, you know, we're not going to drop the ball here. Regardless of what the configuration may look like, whether it continues with the existing board, or whether we move in another direction, you know, we have a commitment to bringing people into this county for travel and tourism, and we'll make sure that we execute that and carry that forward. But I just wanted to at least make everybody aware of that. And as I said, if my colleagues would be supportive of the idea of them possibly coming and making a presentation here, you know, we should look at doing that. Wanted to thank Commissioner Kalo for his hard work on the WACCA. A lot of folks here about highway projects and road projects, but they aren't familiar with the WACCA, the Northeast Ohio Area Wide Coordinating Agency, a very important group that makes very key decisions about transportation projects around here. And he has done an amazing job this past year, and just want to thank you for your leadership on that. Commissioner Troy, who I know from down in Columbus, will certainly keep the meetings interesting and entertaining, no question about that, but he's also very passionate about local government, and that's a good thing, too. We had the opportunity this week to, you know, present the check over there from the solid waste recycling dollars for the pavilion at Black River, and it's just amazing, the big rebirth that's taking place in Lorain, in downtown Lorain, and along the river, and, you know, Mayor Rittenhour and his whole team over there, and council just doing a great job of bringing that back to life with Port Authority and everybody else. And we want to continue to work in partnership with them. It's good to see the Cleveland Clinic opening up their rehab facility there in Avon, as things there in Avon continue to boom and grow. We really enjoy working with Mayor Jensen over there and have a good working relationship with him. Had the opportunity to attend the Main Street Illyria meeting at Illyria City Hall this past week, and the board had voted so that the mayor of Illyria and also the commissioners could have a seat at the table, a voting seat at the table, so we're looking forward to working in partnership with them. It was good to attend the swearing in for Mayor John Hunter, also Kevin Watkins and Carolyn White being sworn in as council members there. That community is just growing by leaps and bounds. And very much enjoyed the employee luncheon the other day that we did for our employees. The commissioners all pitching in to pay for that luncheon, and the employees definitely enjoyed that. We just have a great group of people who work here, and that's why I said it's difficult when we, you know, we pass these budgets where we can't do more for our employees. It's upsetting because they're so dedicated to what they do. And I just want to say, as the newest commissioner here, it has been just a great experience working with Ted and Lori, the whole team here with the administrator, Jerry, Teresa and Lisa and Tony, who does all this remarkable work, keeping us all on track and on schedule every single day. We just have a lot of very capable, competent people here, and I can't thank them enough for, you know, putting up with some of my crazy questions here, as the freshmen and the rookie trying to learn the ropes. But it's been great working with everybody and looking forward to an exciting year in 2016.
Okay. January 11th at 9:30, the commissioners will have their organizational meeting. At 11 o'clock that same day, we'll have our Transportation Improvement District. January 20th at 9:30, the Commissioners' Regular Board Meeting. The 26th, we'll have our hearing in Gore Affinage Road. And at 11, we'll have our Investment Advisory. And then, the State of Ohio Mileage Reimbursement for 2016 will be 52 cents. Board Correspondents?
I move the reading be waived.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kokoski.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Public comment?
Anybody wishing to address the board? I see David standing up. Here he comes.
Long time no see, David.
It's not a weekend. Good to see you down there.
David Ashenhurst, Oberlin. Four very quick things. Thank you all for your summations of the year. I appreciate that, and I don't remember that happening in the past, but I think that's a good idea to sort of recap at the last meeting. Is the Visitor Bureau presentation scheduled yet, or is it just one of the meetings in January?
Originally, there was going to be a presentation made this month. We've decided, because of working through a lot of these year-end things, as you could tell, we were even wrapping up some things here at the last minute. A lot of things to wrap up before the end of the year, so we were interested in the Visitors Bureau making a presentation next month. And as I said, it would be my preference, and if my colleagues are supportive of having the idea of having them come in and actually make the presentation here.
Let me make something clear, because things we read in the newspaper become reality, and they're not always reality. My meeting with the Visitors Bureau is work product meeting, to get information and gather information and put that with alternatives, and meet my assignment by the Board of Commissioners on the things each commissioner's asked me to do. In the context of having a private meeting is completely inaccurate. I have meetings every day, all the time with people, and they're not secret meetings. They're work meetings to accomplish goals and objectives. When the Board of Commissioners make a decision based upon recommendations given to them, how they want to have, whether they want to have a presentation or how they want to deal with that, they have to do it out here.
I understand.
I'm just pointing out there because you asked, and I wanted to say something earlier about it, and I didn't, so...
I just wanted to make sure I didn't miss it.
You won't miss it, David.
I understand. So it's at one of the, I mean, we don't know which one of the January meetings yet. That's all I wanted to know.
It hasn't been scheduled yet.
Okay.
And I still plan on having a meeting with them to get information from them, and they'll be given an opportunity to present their case.
Thank you. Second, just a reminder that Grace Galucci is going to be at the City Club of Cleveland on a panel on January 8th, so that's before your organizational meeting, and I'm hoping to go, but otherwise can listen to it on the radio, and once you listen to it, you can pick it up anytime, which is very nice.
She's just a great lady, good leadership, very thorough, and we're really lucky to have her in the WACCA.
Well, I'm looking forward to that. The description in the city club is, you know, what happens when your population is shrinking and stuff like that, that transportation needs do change over time? What are we doing about that? Third, regarding scheduling, can you guys request a different time than Monday at 11:00 PM to rebroadcast the Commissioners' Meeting? That's council night twice a month in Oberlin and a lot of other places. 11 o'clock is really late, anyway, but, I mean, it's been 11 o'clock for years. Can somebody just see if it could be 10 o'clock, a different night?
Yeah, I will check on that, but let me explain the process, because you probably know it, but a lot of people don't. The only facility in Lorain County that has the ability to be on every cable channel in Lorain County is Lorain Community College. So, they have graciously, for, I want to say, for 15 years, maybe 16 now, have allowed us to have slots within their studio to broadcast our videos of our meetings. I can certainly talk to them, but it has to go around their programming.
Understood. I don't watch 11 o'clock on the...
I never watch the...
Community College.
I'm here, so...
Yeah. I mean, I don't watch any other night at 11 o'clock either, but, I mean, that channel, but it's just be more convenient. Saturday at noon is not a popular time to be sitting in front of your TV watching a meeting, anyway, but be that as it may, just get the other one at a different day at 11 o'clock at night, is all I ask, or at least talk to them about it.
Or adding another day, or evening one, maybe.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
Do you want to put the public through that?
And lastly, what is the status of Butternut Ridge Road? And that, there are signs on Butternut Ridge about saving our road and all that.
There currently is no status on Butternut Ridge Road. I have met with Republic. We've had conversation. We're working on some business expansion, a rehab of the Transportation Center in Kyleal Township. We've been discussing that. We've been discussing sewers over at the Collections Recycling Center and the need for them at the facility itself, for the leachate that's coming, that they're trucking right now. And so, we're in conversation on where to take that. I informed them of what the process was, if they should feel the need to make a petition for vacating the road. They, I showed them, I got it from the clerk, all of the timeframes and processes, and told them that we were not going to have conversation about vacating the road unless and until they filed a formal petition to do so, so that we can go through the public process with regard to the community and their input onto that, into that, excuse me.
I hope we're discouraging them, I mean, to the extent we can.
It, it, it would be premature for the board to even answer that, because they have a role and a responsibility during the petition process, David, so, you know, I've had conversation with them. They understand the sensitivity of the issue.
Okay.
But they are still allowed to file a petition and make their case before the Board of Commissioners, and I would suggest that we don't even answer that, because, you know, you could have some down-road issues.
Okay, so there's, nothing is scheduled at this point? No hearing, no...
They haven't filed a petition.
They haven't filed a petition. Are the township trustees being asked something at this point? I mean, that's all I had seen, was the stuff in the paper and now these signs.
They have spoken with the township trustees in Kyleal and in Russia Township. I have received mixed messages from Republic and a different, somewhat different message from the trustees in those communities, so they have spoken with them. But once again, the process, once they file the petition, the process will move into a public forum, and there'll be, you know, evidence taken, and there'll be comments, and there'll be ample time to sort through the issues. I generally believe that they're probably going to file the petition, because we won't have conversation with them without them filing the petition, because it just doesn't allow the public the information that they need.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, David.
Sorry to end on a question like that, but...
That's a good question.
Happy New Year.
It's a good question.
See you next year. Good morning. The only requirement, we need you to state your name and where you're from before you begin.
Okay, good morning. I'm Jim Galloway. I'm from Oberlin. I'm a longtime resident and cyclist, and I'm here to share with you my experiences with backroads and beaches. There's been a tremendous change. There are so many cyclists in our area that, in the past, were never here. And I've met a lot of these folks, and they said, "You know, we're coming back. We're telling our friends." And this is a clear testament to the good work the Visitors Bureau has done. I'm personal friends with business owners, restaurants, the bike shop, and they said, "You can't believe what this has done for us. We are so fortunate to have this in our area." Now, looking at what I've heard here in this meeting, this county clearly has some real serious problems. And we have a clear winner here. They've won national and state awards. So that we would then look at this entity as a problem, that we would want to change or destroy this group. Rising waters raise all boats, and so many are benefiting from the good work they're doing. I can tell you this from 35 years in business, you can't just pull a small element or marketing material out of an entity and think you're going to equal what they're doing. So I hope that you think long and hard before you take this bright spot in our county and seek to change it, when we have so many serious issues in front of us. In conclusion, I've had a tremendous experience meeting these folks. When they come here and say, "I didn't even know Lorain County. I didn't even know you were here. This is a great place. I've had a wonderful time, and we're coming back." So I really hope you take a hard look at this. And the vague discussion I've heard of redistributing these funds, some kind of a patchwork group, you're never going to replicate the good work that's been done here and strongly opposed to any changes to the good work that's going on. And thank you for having me.
Thank you for your comments.
I know I had a chance to speak with you yesterday, Mr. Galloway.
Oh, yes.
By phone, and, as I said, you know, the cyclists, I know, are very active in the area, and Ed Stewart, he's very active in that group as well, too. And, you know, even as we move forward with our, we are going, making a grant application for a strategy for our lakefront in the county. We'd like to look at ways to increase the bike lanes over there and connect the trails and everything else. And so, but, yeah, I appreciate our conversation yesterday, and thanks for your comments today.
Of course, and one other thing, I don't know if you're aware, Lorain County is now part of the National Park Service Trail, celebrating African-American heritage and the Underground Railroad. And this is something that was a direct result of work started many years ago by the Visitors Bureau, and these are a whole different kind of tourists. And they come to our county, they spend money, they tell their friends, their friends come. So, and it's just one of a number of national and statewide. They're taking first place against entities like Cleveland Museum of Art, Center of Science in Columbus. The talent that's over there, the awards they're winning speak for themselves. And again, this county has a lot of issues, and this organization is winning awards like this. You're not going to recreate this with some patchwork redistributing these funds to whomever else, some smaller local entities trying to create a parallel universe. You're never going to get the unified, successful results that we're seeing now. So again, thank you very much for your consideration.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. First of all, my name is Pat Morrison, and I live in Lorain. And first of all, I'm a little old lady, and I want to share with you that I was sitting in the back, and I cannot hear you. So, I don't know if there's a problem with the microphone system, but as a little old lady, who, I do have hearing aids, I tried to turn them up, I still cannot hear you. So, you might look at that.
Before you were in church, Pat, you should have moved up closer.
That probably would have helped. That probably would have helped.
I can gain up the mics for them. Sometimes we don't, I know we have a lot of people in the back, but nobody's really said that before. I'll make sure the gain goes up on those mics. Thank you.
Thank you. I have, I'm here to speak on behalf of the Visit Lorain County. I have three letters that I wrote to the commissioners, and I would like to be able to approach you and hand them to you if it's all right.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Basically, some of you know that I am in the tourism business and have been in the tourism business for over 30 years. I have a very small company located in Lorain, and my job is to take people out of Lorain, out of Lorain County, to other tourism destinations.
You need to step...
Get away.
Yeah. They're perfect.
All right. So, I'm here to tell you my perception, very briefly, about what tourism, what communities have to do to bring tourism in. And I think there are two major things. One is, they have to have attractions. They have to have events. They have to have motels. They have to have restaurants, and they have to have unique gift shops. The second thing is, is that they have to promote these. I maintain that you can have the very best of these things, but if you don't market it, if you don't promote it correctly, no one is going to come. The promotion is extremely important. And I'm here to tell you that although I do not take people, I do, all bus travel. It's bus tours. I don't take people to Lorain County. I am very much aware of the marketing that the Lorain County Visitors Bureau does, and I think it's excellent. I get, over my desk, probably 50, and through social media, a day of people who are, who want me to bring a bus tour to their community. And I am telling you that what I see the Visitors Bureau doing is excellent. It has to be in connection with the community. In other words, if, and I also sit on a committee called the Lorain Tourism Committee of Lorain Growth. Lorain has to have attractions. The city of Lorain has to provide attractions and reasons for people to come, and then the tourism, the Visit Lorain County needs to promote those. If the community doesn't have attractions, what is the tourism, the Visit Lorain County can't promote it if they're not there. It's a two-way street. And I see this all the time when I go to other places, that the communities are working together, and the community supplies the attractions and the motels and the hotels and the events, and the tourism, it used to be convention and visitors bureaus, supply the marketing. And I just want you to know that I firmly believe that Visit Lorain County is doing an absolutely excellent job. And I'm sure all of you have read, because this is probably why you've gotten involved in this, is that tourism is becoming a huge economic resource for government entities, for businesses, and you read the statistics, I read the statistics, and I'm blown away by how much they say, how much money is generated by tourism. So I understand your concern and your interest, but I firmly believe that we need to keep Visit Lorain County as it is and let them promote the things that we have in this county. So I thank you very much.
Thanks, Pat.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name's Karen Patel. I'm with the Countryan Suites, and I also represent the Quality Inn, and I'm a stakeholder as well. I understand change is inevitable. The county's changed a lot. I'm actually a resident of this area since 2000, so I'm relatively new to this area, and I've seen a lot of change go on in this area as well. I'm also a board member on Visit Lorain County. I've been a board member since 2002, actually, 2003, sorry. And I've been working with Barb since she's been a board member. I work with Pat Kano as well. There's been a lot of differences working with both of them. Barb has brought on a lot of change, and you can see a noticeable difference. I know, reading the article that I read on Sunday, that people are saying that, you know, they're not represented. There's always going to be some differences as changes take place. People are going to say that, you know what, they're not being represented. But as things change, you know what? There was a time I was saying that Illyria wasn't represented. As new hotels go up, as new businesses go up, Avon has seen so much development take place. Right now, Sheffield's seen so much development take place. Everybody's going to feel that they're underrepresented. The board of Visit Lorain County has moved in those directions where growth has taken place. I see members coming in from Avon, Sheffield, they're all represented. I don't think it's a case of where they're not represented. People are coming on board, the representation is taking place, it just takes time. There's things where the newspaper was saying that the meetings are not open. You know what? The board needs time if it's an issue of the meetings are not... where growth has taken place. I see members coming in from Avon, Sheffield, they're all represented. I don't think it's, it's, it's a case of where they're not represented. People are coming on board. The representation is taking place. It's just, takes time. There's things where the newspaper was saying that the, the meetings are not open. You know what, the board needs time. If, if, if it's an issue of the meetings are not open to the public, then you know what, the board needs to be told what needs to be done. I think if there's, if there's an issue there, they need to be, those issues need to be fixed. I think there's commissioners that are represented on the, on the board as well, then they need to give them, give them the opportunity to correct those, those issues. If, if the issues are correctable, then let's fix them. Change needs to take place. I agree with that. I don't, I don't disagree with that. But the, the Visit Lorraine County is a very good organization. It's been doing a really, really good job of promoting the county. We're at a, at a crossroads. We've got a major convention coming to this area. If we make some big changes right now, I think it's going to hurt the county as far as tax dollars. There's a lot of hotels coming into this area. There's some big promotions coming into this area. We've got some growth as far as tourism go, is concerned. We've got, for example, Common Grounds has a canopy tour that just took, that came into the area this year. There's a lot of opportunities where we can bring tourists to the, to the area for, for, or visitors to attract to this county. We need to take advantage of those. Barb and Visit Lorraine County has done a really, really good job of promoting the county in a lot of different ways. We need to continue that. I think if we try to make some major changes right now, we're really, really going to end up hurting ourselves. And if we make some major changes, it's going to take a few years. There's been a lot of awards that Visit Lorraine County has won, and I think it speaks for itself. So, I think we really, really need to consider as to how do we make these changes. I understand the board size needs to be changed, or whatever the structure needs to be changed. That's fine. Whatever changes need to be made, we need to kind of take it step by step, but it needs to be given a chance. And maybe those changes need to be done gradually. Thank you for the time.
Thank you.
Thank you for your feedback and your work on the board.
Good morning, commissioners, and thank you for this opportunity. My name is Lee Klingshorn. My wife and I own Klingshorn Winery in Avon Lake. The winery's been there since 1935, so if you want to speak of changes, we've had experience with many. The Visitors Bureau, we have heard many complimentary remarks about it. My wife is on the board. She has been bringing home stories from her meetings of, that, that have seemed upsetting. And I've tried my best to stand back from it, because we all have a lot to do, and, and you can only get your fingers in so many pies effectively. And it's come to this point where I feel I think I can have a positive impact on this, on this discussion that's going on. I've served on other boards. I've been president of an association board. I've served on another government board down in Columbus, administered through the Department of Agriculture. I have experience in accountability, transparency, and, and other requirements of spending, responsible spending of the taxpayer dollar. I, I believe that our Visitors Bureau is strong in that they are inclusive, they are collaborative, they are efficient. They, and, and unfortunately, inclusive is one of those two-edged swords that has caused this committee to be large and cumbersome. I believe that, I personally believe that a smaller board is easier to get things done. However, there are cases where a larger board has advantages also. I believe Visit Lorraine County is one of those areas where a larger board has more positive attributes than negative. This is because they represent so many aspects of our community and what this community can offer to the rest of the tourism world. And the people that serve on these boards are volunteers. They have no other remuneration for being there. They don't even get mileage. They spend their time, their effort, they, and their intelligence to bring good things to Lorraine County. They strive to bring money in from outside of Lorraine County. If you market within Lorraine County, you're really not increasing your own budget. You're not increasing the reputation of Lorraine County to other places. So, so perhaps, you know, they have a perception of not helping the county more directly than they should, and, and those are things that need to be worked out. They are very collaborative. They work with other industry groups. They, they bring tourism together as a multifunctional opportunity, as opposed to individual opportunities. Not very many organizations have that ability to be collaborative. Certainly, a full government institution like yourself has to go through many steps to be accountable and, and seen as representing everybody. Not that they should not be accountable, but certainly they have the opportunity to bring things together in a more casual atmosphere than a proceeding such as this. And that, that is to their advantage, and they are very efficient. We've heard already from other speakers, and have seen it, you know, every dollar that they are given to spend, I think turns into three, four, or five dollars when it is actually spent by including the industry groups in their programs. We do group advertising with them. We, you know, what they spent on their little booklet, Visit Lorraine County, is a small amount compared to what it costs to put it together, because the industry members are collaborating and, and helping out. They are a very passionate board. You have said that yourself, Mr. Lundey. They are, their only reward is to receive that sense of participation to, to bona fide their sense of having accomplished something. And that accomplishment is their vote. That, that is what represents them. I, I got to say yea or nay to providing a new avenue for a tourism opportunity here in Lorraine County. And, and we have worked together as a group to come to this best conclusion. So, there is nothing wrong with this organization. I understand accountability. I, I get that big time. I was in a situation on another board where that was also a year-long, excruciatingly painful process we went through. And, and it was pounded home that accountability is number one. And, and the players become emotional, and, and it becomes unprofessional at times on all sides of the argument. I've, I've read through some of the minutes in the last couple of meetings that they've had, and it's counterproductive how these conversations have proceeded. So, the idea of the commissioners being on the board is a good one. The commissioners should have that oversight. The commissioners are the ultimate responsible to the taxpayer. And however, to accomplish that, to come in and what appears in a large respect to be a heavy-handed attitude, you know, is, it's just a lack of political acumen on the part of some of the players. And, and a part of, and the emotionality of the bureau members have put up a large wall between these two groups. The, a couple of the ghosts that are in the closets, we, you've already spoken on budget to dollars going to other entities. I, the impression I've received from my wife and a couple of the others I've talked to is that it's not a general fund fear that they have, but a other tourist organizations. And earlier you talked of being on the, was it Oberlin Main Street?
Lorraine Main Street.
And, and perhaps the commissioners decide to fund something in that tourism area, and that would be a reduction in Lorraine County tourism dollars. There, is it perceived? Is it perceived incorrectly? Again, there's a lot of gray area, a lot of misunderstandings that have not been well discussed, and not all of the ghosts have been revealed as, as nothings. Or, and, and I believe everybody is on the same page of promoting Lorraine County and making this a better community, bringing more money in. You know, the thought that occurred to me while I was listening to discussions, too, is not only do they promote to--
We need to put you on hold for one second. They have to do a tape change in the back.
Okay.
Just hold your thought for one minute. Thank you. Sorry about that.
So, yeah, not, not all of the issues are clearly defined. The, the proposal of the commissioners on the table at this point is for three commissioner seats on that board. The, there's a couple of perceived problems with that from their perspective, insofar as they've, they've had participation in the past, mostly Betty Blair, from way back when. And Williams, past commissioner, also showed a desire to be an active member there. And they accommodated his schedule with the change of the meeting date, and it was still very difficult for him to attend those meetings. And if there are three commissioners on the board, you folks are busy. There, there's no doubt that you have a lot of important things to tend to. And sure, you will be there when it time to count budget dollars, to make sure that accountability. But if there is a lesser important meeting going on, and you have more important things to do, there could be a situation where a quorum would be difficult to garner if three of the, so, and, and that is a perception that the board at the Visitors Bureau has. So, that is--
Klingshorn, let me just stop you there.
Okay.
So, as we're going through your, we always have alternates who serve on boards for us, so we always make sure we have our seats filled.
Okay.
Okay. Just a, in point of clarity, some perception out there it could be, but we appoint a lot of boards. We sit on a lot by revised code, and we have alternates who serve for us.
And, and I don't doubt that you make every effort to fulfill your duties. However, not everybody understands those points.
That's why I brought it for clarity.
Thank you. And also, you know, okay, so you have designees that will sit on, in your place. That does not promote consistency as well as it should. It'd be somebody that would bring a report back to you, but may not bring your thoughts to the table on a particular subject. So, they, they, they have a very, the, the board currently works well together. They are all on the same page. And a difference between a commissioner and a designee would interrupt some of that continuity, I believe. So, that, and that is one of their perceived difficulties with three board seats. And I, I don't think there's any problem or any perceived problem with the commissioners wanting to take control of the organization. That, that just has not struck me at all as one of the issues on the table. So, we need a more, a better solution to this problem. My, my thought personally would be allow a board member and/or the designee, or this board's member, to be the chairman of that committee. Now, you would, that would provide a consistency to the board of the Visitors Bureau. It would provide leadership from this office. It would provide accountability to this office in its full extent. And it would not require three times or half again as much the attention of this commission to oversee the spending of those taxpayer dollars. I haven't approached the board of Lorraine County with this idea. I was only, you know, I really only got into this discussion here in the last couple of days, because my wife was finally so fed up with the situation, and, and I can't bear to live with that, that, and, and it seems to me that--
You guys can all relate to that, right?
Understand the pain.
Yeah. So, so, you know, and, and a chairman runs the meeting. A chairman sets the agenda. A chairman can stop a vote that he does not want to occur. And a chairman can, in my experience, completely control a organization. So, with that said, you know, that, that's my idea. It would need to be vetted from a number of different areas to become reality. I, I hope it has merit. And my final point is going to be, I keep hearing that you wish for the Visit Lorraine County to make a presentation of how they're going to come around your way of thinking. And I, I see a big problem with that, insofar as I don't believe they understand what your needs are. I don't think they understand where they are short in transparency. I'm not sure I understand where they are short in transparency. If it's because they haven't advertised a meeting, if it's because they haven't published minutes, or something of that nature, those are easy solutions. You, you got a Ohio Ethics Board that sends out programs to counties and local governments to keep these kind, type of committees on track in a legal sense. So, in, in my other experiences on government spending boards, the Spending Authority has issued RFPs, Requests for Proposals, specifying exactly what they anticipate should be done to spend these particular tax dollars. I don't know. Maybe there has been something of that nature. From what I've seen of the meetings minutes, it's been more a representative sitting down and stating some views and stating some attitudes. I don't see that it's really spelled out what the requirements are anticipated of this group. So, in my opinion, a solution would be better, would, would be better realized if, if there was discussion around the table between more of the key players, and not just one or two representatives that are carrying a message. And, and it really should start with a, a document from this group stating what shortfalls are perceived and what is needed to make it the more transparent organization and to, to be satisfactory to this body. So, I think that concludes what I have to say.
Thank you.
I just wanted to thank you for your feedback. Generally, when I see, Lee, you're out in the field, working, and, or, or there at the store, and quite frankly, surprised you were even able to find time to come over here. So--
It was difficult.
Yeah. So, I appreciate you doing that. And, you know, I know that, I've known you and your family and your family business for quite some time. I don't think there's a holiday goes by where there's not Klingshorn wine on the table at dinner, but--
Thank you.
But really appreciate all that you do. And, and, you know, I know your wife's been very dedicated and passionate about what's going on with the board. And, but you made some good points here today, and we're certainly going to look at those. But thanks for taking the time out to actually be here. And you know how the ropes work. You used to head up the Ohio Wineries and Grate Growers Association there in, in Columbus, and did a great job doing that. So, so you're familiar with how sometimes some of these things work. But I definitely appreciate your feedback on this. And, you know, as I said, we're going to take the time to, to study this and hear the presentation, and then move forward from there. But there's no race to do anything, you know, by the end of the year, early, first of next year. I mean, we probably will have to make a decision in the first quarter, though.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
We had a big, big jug of Klingshorn wine on for Thanksgiving.
Oh, okay.
Hopefully for Christmas, too. Anybody else wishing to address the board? Seeing none, I move that we go into executive session as outlined by the administrator and Assistant County Prosecutor.
Second.
Ms. Gasky.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, fourth floor downtown Elyria. These are public meetings, and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, and click on View Agenda for a printable copy of the agenda.